Good evening and welcome to the November 5th meeting of the Hickory City Council. I want to welcome each and every one of you here this evening. At this time, I would ask the Reverend Mike Faircloth from Christ United Methodist Church to the podium for our invocation. I would ask that if you're able to stand and remain standing after the invocation for the Pledge of Allegiance. Is Reverend Faircloth here? Yes, he's here, okay. Reverend Faircloth, thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm leaving here to go to a service that our church is gathering to pray for our election and our elected officials. Thank you all for what you do. Let's pray. Father, in the name, the great name of Jesus, we come before you tonight. Number one, thank you, new Lord, for this day and the blessings of this day. You've given us a beautiful rainy day, God, and we're just so thankful for what we have been blessed with. We do pray over our elections. We do pray over our elected officials. And, God, we pray that you will give us wisdom in this place tonight. Lord, we pray that we're led by your Holy Spirit. And, God, the decisions that we make, may they honor you and all that you are and all that you ever will be. We know that your love will reign forever, so we pray the Spirit of love over every single one of us. Thank you, Lord. Bless our time together. Bless these officials. Bless these people. And may we move forward through your will and what you have for us. Be with us in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have two very special presentations this evening. So at this time, I'm going to call upon our Public Works Director, Mr. Steve Miller, to recognize the achievements of some of his staff and personnel. So Steve, we appreciate you being here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Swanson, Mr. Wood. I have some very special guests up here, but I have one in particular that is from the city of Wilson, Mr. Bill Bass, if he would come up. He's our current American Public Works Association of North Carolina Streets Division President, and he's going to help me present some awards and some recognition to some of our street and engineering employees. Also like Caroline Colm to come down as well, please.
Mayor, council, thank you all for the opportunity to be here tonight in your time. Certainly appreciate it. You guys are very blessed. You have some really good people, and I am the president, current president of the Street Board for APWA. But the trail was blazed for me. Caroline, she just, she took the ball and ran before I got it. She is a past president, so I had a very easy year this year, and she had made that very easy for me. So I got to tout her just a little bit. But you guys have some great employees. I'm here tonight to talk about a few of those, and I'm here to tell you that it's not just your city employees competing with each other to be good. They're shining all over the state. These awards tonight are among their peers. One of them is an actual national award for an operator here tonight. So this is a lot to be proud of. And I got to tell American Public Works Association for just a minute, all the good things that they do for our communities, the way they bring us together, the way they help us, and nothing could be more apparent than the help that has been given to our neighbors further west from people all over this state and those associated with American Public Works. So it is a great organization, and I think it's great that you all support your staff in doing and operating in those organizations. So they make it better. But tonight, I don't know if Jamie Lee's here.
I think he's made it yet.
Okay. Do you want, do you want me to go ahead and talk about Jamie? Okay, all right. So Jamie Lee is in your street division, and he, he won the North Carolina rodeo competition for, for equipment rodeo. I would say that City Wilson likes to think we have very good operators, too. We came in a very distant second. When I say distance, I'm talking 30, 45 seconds behind Jamie. So he apparently is a very good operator, and I think Bobby Hadley had done this before and kind of whipped us, whipped up on us before, too. So we can't seem to overcome the hurdle here in Hickory when it comes to that. But with that opportunity of being the first in the state, he had an opportunity to go to PWX in Atlanta, and he finished third in PWX overall and first in the backhoe. So this is the fifth straight year Hickory has sent one somebody to PWX after winning at the state level. So I hate that Jamie's not here right now because that's, that's quite an achievement. And that, that person can make your operation or break your operation, and they, they provide safety and efficiency for, for your street crews. So congratulations to Jamie. Next up, I want to talk about Zach Houston for just a second. Man, I'll tell you what, Zach, if you'll come down. Zach is our North Carolina APWA Street Division Scholarship winner. So Zach got a check from us for $2,500 to help with his education. And Zach, he has an associate's degree in mechanical engineering, and he's been with the city since 2018 as a CAD and survey technician. In 2019, Zach went back to school. Well, currently, he is a full-time student at Old Dominion, and he has a one-year-old. I can't imagine how you completed any courses with a one-year-old. That's, that's an achievement within itself. But Zach is going to receive his bachelor's degree in civil engineering technology in These are quotes about Zach, okay? He loves seeing how his work enhances people's lives. He takes pride in his projects. And pride in his projects is pride in the city's projects and pride in your projects and pride that you all can share, too. Zach says, "I believe I'm a strong candidate for this scholarship because of my passion for working with the public and my dedication to designing and managing projects that benefit our community." That's a, that's a very strong statement from a young man. And in today's world, public service is not always the first thing that young people think about. And for somebody like Zach to, to not only think about it, but to do it and have that passion for it certainly brings a lot to your community. And I'd like to thank Zach and congratulate him on his scholarship from APWA. So Zach's a good student, but not a public speaker. So last but not least, John, if you would come up. John Bowman is in Street Division, and he is the recipient of the Street Division Achievement Award winner, winner this year. So, you know, this award is given out to, to an employee that shows exemplary execution and, and workmanship and has the opportunity to benefit their division. So Wilson, we've been very fortunate to actually beat Hickory at least on one time on this. So we've, we've had a couple of these, and it's a very prestigious award for these folks. John has been with the city since 2004. He started as equipment operator, and he's worked his way up through the ranks, and now he is an assistant street supervisor. John helps to train coworkers to use equipment, encourages them to acquire the CDLS. He can operate any piece of equipment. Obviously, he's not quite as good as Jamie, but he can operate a piece of equipment. So, but he, he can do anything you need him to do. But, you know, our citizens sometimes don't think about what we do until they're in time of need. And when we have storms, and you guys probably have a lot more snow and ice than we do in Wilson, but during those times, John's presence has been essential. He's selfless, and he works any shift to accommodate other employees' schedules, and he ensures work done is done in a safety, safely manner. So he's an active member of his church, acts as an usher each week, and helps with the kids camp each summer. According to the nomination, I'll quote, "John quietly goes above and beyond the call of duty without complaint. He demonstrates what a positive attitude and hard work can do. He is an integral part of the team, and we are very thankful he is here to help. Our jobs would be much more difficult without him." So John, congratulations on the street achievement.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your time tonight, and we certainly, certainly appreciate you participating with us in APWA, and I'm proud to be here as representative of APWA and Wilson, North Carolina. You have a beautiful city.
Well, thank you so much, and we want to send our sincere thanks to you for coming tonight and presenting these awards. I know it's a kind of a dreary rainy election night, and the fact that, that you're here to do this in person speaks highly of you and your city, and we appreciate that and the service that you do as well. And I concur with you. We have, in my mind, and I'm a little bit biased, we have the best coworkers of any city that I know of, and I'll, I'll say that anytime, anywhere in public, and I think everybody up here will agree with me. They, they're dedicated, loyal, faithful, hard-working coworkers, and we, we realize that, and we appreciate the fact that they're getting acknowledged because they don't get acknowledged enough. So we thank you for that, sir.
And I just felt like, you know, it's an opportunity to come here and see, see you all and how you all do business, but it's also an opportunity for you to hear about how good your employees are from someone else other than another employee here.
That's what I was just going to say. We, we know it, but it's great to hear it from somebody else.
And we, we recognize that across the state. So it's, it's an honor to be here, and I thank you for your time.
Yes, sir. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
All right. We have another special presentation from, I believe it's going to be Mr. Cliff Moon. He's got a presentation this evening concerning the North Carolina Senior Tar Heel Legislature. So Cliff, I'll give you the floor at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Wood, Mr. Swanson, members of the council. Appreciate the opportunity to make this presentation. I want, again, Hank and I talked about this once before, that I asked him if he'd ever heard of the North Carolina Senior Tar Heel Legislature. To be honest with you, until it appeared in the Hickory Daily Record, I hadn't heard of it either. And, but it's an interesting organization I'd like to share with you tonight about, and I've shared some copies of the priorities and some little brochure on it, and I want to do. So thank you for this opportunity to address you. Again, my name is Cliff Moon, and I reside at 4340 North Center Street, Unit 304 in Hickory. And I come before you tonight as the newly appointed by the Western Piedmont Council of Government Delegate to the North Carolina Senior Tar Heel Legislature for Catawba County. As the brochure before you indicates, the North Carolina Senior Tar Heel Legislature was authorized by the North Carolina General Assembly with the passage of Senate Bill 479 in July of 1993. It's been around a while. And the purposes of that, this organization is to assess the legislative needs of older citizens by convening a forum modeled after the North Carolina General Assembly, promote citizen involvement, advocacy concerning aging issues before the North Carolina General Assembly, to develop a partisan forum for older North Carolinians to discuss senior citizens' issues, provide information and education to senior citizens on the legislative process and matters being considered by the North Carolina General Assembly, and finally, to provide older North Carolinians an opportunity to become more knowledgeable about the legislative process. Each of North Carolina's 100 counties appoints one delegate to the North Carolina Senior Tar Heel Legislature for a two-year term. Most of them also appoint an alternate. We have an alternate in this county, Dr. Judith Ray. At the moment, she will be going off of the Senior Tar Heel Legislature at the end of December, and we will be looking to find someone else who has this interest in serving our older citizens, getting information from them, getting feedback from them, and helping them in the, the issues that are before the General Assembly. Members of this body are volunteers from all walks of life, currently retired or still working, but you have to be at 60-plus years of age. Residents from the county they represent, they have to be that as well. And then finally, the North Carolina Senior Tar Heel Legislature is a unicameral body that is also nonpartisan. We meet three times a year to study issues, hear from subject matter experts and state officials, including legislators, and develop legislative recommendations to present to the North Carolina General Assembly. Since 1993, the North Carolina Senior Tar Heel Legislature has supported the passage of 11 bills into law, and it has consistently promoted the funding for programs supporting older adults and their caregivers and the policies to protect them. This is important because those priorities and other things have to do, and you'll see on the last page of this or next to the last page of this brochure, that we rank nationally in North Carolina in terms of total population, but eighth in the number of people aged 65 and older. In the next two decades, the North Carolina's 65 and older population is projected to increase from 1.7 million to 2.7 million folks, about approximately a 52% increase. So senior issues, senior concerns, senior problems are going to be increasingly in this age group before people like you and our elected leaders and others in the community that serve in these areas. So I've also placed before you the eight legislative priorities, which we just approved at our October 20, 2024 Legislative Session, and which will be the priorities of the North Carolina Senior Tar Heel Legislature in our advocacy with the General Assembly for the next two years. For the sake of not taking too much more of your time in this meeting, I will highlight just three of those priorities here. The first is older adult housing. We have known in Hickory for quite a while about housing issues and having, at one time, I don't know if this is still actually the fact, but one time we had the oldest housing stock in the whole state. And we, we know about the issues of getting affordable housing today for people. Seniors are particularly subject to issues that come up with that, particularly those who are in the lower income ranges. We, so we're supporting safe, affordable, and accessible housing and looking to help, get help from the legislature in doing those kinds of things. Second, if you've been paying attention to this, and I'm sure you have, there is a healthcare workforce crisis in this state and this country since COVID, for sure. Lots of people left the healthcare profession during COVID and after it, but there is certainly a nursing crisis, and as a husband of a former nurse, home health nurse, I know this very well, and she keeps me well informed on these things. But the idea that we want to try to work with our leaderships in the legislature to address that critical healthcare shortage in the years coming up because we're going to need them more and more with that increase in population. Finally, you have several more on that list, but I'm going to jump down to adult protective services, the last one on the, on the page. I do this because, two things. One, I just made this presentation before the Catawba County Commissioners a couple of weeks ago, and as you all know, the North Carolina, North Carolina, the county departments of social services are mandated by general statute, and they are mandated to evaluate and reports of abuse, neglect, and exploitation of vulnerable adults through their adult protective services program. However, the, the North Carolina, in North Carolina, the state does not allocate funds for adult protective services. Federal so, sir, excuse me, the federal social services block grant provides about 21% of the funding for DSS staff and county, and then the counties usually, and not all counties do this, but provide the remaining 79% of the funding that then helps with those kinds of issues. And so the North Carolina Senior Tar Heel Legislature will be advocating, and this is an advocacy group, it's, it, we're not a lobby, it's an advocacy group. It's made up of, as I mentioned earlier, it's nonpartisan. I know that there are both Republicans, Democrats, and independents involved in, in this, in this group. As I met them, there's, one of our major advocacy persons is a county commissioner from Hyde County and also the chairman, chairwoman, actually it turns out, of one of the parties in that, major, major parties. And then our own, up, just up the road, George Holloman is the mayor of Taylorsville, and he is a delegate also to this. So it is something that people who are elected officials take part in, and surprisingly to me, that so few people have heard of this. And I appreciate the time you have given me tonight to help explain just a little bit about what this legislature does and how we can work together for the benefit of our senior citizens. So I thank you again for that opportunity. It is my hope that where you can, as elected leaders of Catawba County, you will support your senior population of this county and will encourage our state legislators to do so as well. And if I can do anything to help you in this area, I hope you will let me know. If you have any questions, I'll please, I'll be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Cliff.
Thank you. Thank you for the time.
And you reminded me that I'm a member of the older population now.
Well, almost, Mr. Mayor, but I definitely am, and I, I, you know, I got, when I saw this in the paper, I said, you know, I've been involved in city commissions and other things and in pop, politics around here and other things and through civic groups like Rotary that we're both in, and I, but I decided when I turned 75 this summer, I thought, well, about time I do something maybe for people in my generation. So that's what I'm trying to do. Thank you all for the time. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
We will understand that I have another place to be tonight, right?
I understand. Thank you. And since you reminded me of our older population, I'll just say that Councilman Zagoroli is absent this evening. He's on vacation.
Oh.
All right. Some of you will get that later. Each council meeting, we allow those who would like to address the city council to have the opportunity to be able to do that, and in just a few minutes, we'll be providing that opportunity once again. When you come in, there's a sheet to be able to sign up, to be able to address the council, but you don't necessarily have to do that. If you didn't know that that opportunity existed, we will certainly allow you the opportunity not to be able to do that. We just ask a few things. We ask that you limit your conversation to three minutes or less. We ask that you state your name and give us your residential address. And we also will let you know that this is not a time for question and answers. It won't turn into a debate. If you, if it turns out that you do have questions, we will afford the proper staff person or ourselves, make ourselves available to answer any questions you may have, but this opportunity for you is to bring any concerns or to address the council in any manner that you would see fit. So at this time, we do have one person who has signed up to speak, and like I said, if you didn't have the opportunity, or perhaps you didn't know that, you can certainly speak tonight. And I'll just remind everyone here that you don't have to wait until a council meeting to be able to address the council. Each of our council members make themselves available in various ways, and you pretty much have the opportunity to speak to us at any time. So at this time, having said all of that, I'll ask Ms. Keisha Collins to the podium, and if you would, please, for the record, state your name and your address.
Hi, my name is Keisha Collins. I live at 815 Third Street, Court Southwest, Hickory, North Carolina 28602. I'm here to address the council, the mayor, and the city attorney that in September 2024, at the Ridgeview Community Meeting, I shared the experience that the new homeowners was experiencing. Council Freeman spoke after and said that the city of Hickory called my bluff by advising me to hire an attorney. I laughed and I said, they didn't call my bluff. Some of the repairs was done, but they, that they started, but they didn't complete it. So I want to know what exactly does calling my bluff mean, especially coming from a councilman? Because out of 10 homes, five of them have been sold, and nobody is happy, and this is an initiative through the city of Hickory and JRN LLC for affordable housing. And rumor is that Habitat recently took legal action against JRN, who built the homes. I don't appreciate the fact that Councilman Freeman know we are here, know we've been targeted, and all he says is contact the NAACP or hire an attorney. Annabell, Dave Lynetti, and Woods have been very unprofessional and considerate, as well as slandering my name through contractors and throughout the city regarding me coming here and addressing my concerns. Then Mayor Hank Gass, he fails to respond to my emails and calls. I mean, what, what is your duty and why are you the mayor? I'm a citizen, and I have complaints. I think that's your duty to respond and follow up with me. So all the city council think that, and then I guess, you know, I did receive a letter from the city attorney. I guess they thought that was going to be a scare tactic and threaten me. It doesn't. It just adds more fuel to the fire to make me contact the necessary entities to investigate city of Hickory, because it just ain't right. And, you know, I'm, I'm gonna just continue, I'm not gonna hire a lawyer, I'm gonna just continue to trust in God to right the wrongs because there's some very wicked individuals, employees through the city of Hickory, and it's just very frustrating. So each and every one who knows my concerns, who hadn't addressed my concerns, who hadn't followed up with me, just swept on the rug, I mean, will eventually be held accountable because it's just not right. Because, I mean, like I said, you know, each and every one of y'all that go home at nighttime, I guarantee y'all ain't got to worry about leaking roofs, low water pressure, toilets backing up, houses flooding, roofs falling in. You know, the list goes on and on of what the homebuyers are dealing with over here in Ridgeview at these new construction homes. Councilman Freeman is well aware, but we ain't getting any help. Nobody cares. So, so I just think, you know, people should be held accountable. Like, I mean, why did, why did Freeman run for city council for Ridgeview? Because he's not, he's part of the problem, not a solution to what's going on in Ridgeview. And, and so, you know, I, I feel offended because, you know, okay, well, that's that.
Thank you, Ms. Collins.
Thank you so very much.
No, we, we don't allow any cheering or jeering or outburst.
No, I was just appreciating her presence. Great job.
All right. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council this evening? Please come to the podium and state your name and address. Oh, I'm sorry, I was looking at two different people. The order doesn't matter.
I didn't realize.
That's okay. Your name and address, please.
My name is Nicole Sedbury. I live at 3064 Sandy Ford Road in Newton, border Newton and Hickory. I was here, I'm here talking about the development that is being proposed. Do I need to get closer?
Okay. If you're here to talk about a public hearing, there's a-
I'm not really sure how this works. That's what I'm-
Okay, I'm sorry. I should have explained that. We have three public hearings this evening. So if you're here in regards to a public hearing, we'll allow a separate time for people to speak in regards to that. These comments are not related to the public hearing. So if you would, please, if, I'll let you know when that time is.
Yeah, yeah, I didn't realize.
I'm sorry. No, no, it's not your fault. Okay, is there anyone here that wants to speak in some, to something that's not on a public hearing tonight? It was your-
I'm not sure what the public hearing is.
Okay. What, what was you wanting to speak on, ma'am?
I wanted to discuss your house.
Okay, that's not on the public hearing, so you can come forward to speak if you would like.
I need to-
Yes, ma'am. State your name and address, please.
My name is Angela Anthony. I am a resident at 3539 NC 181 Morganton, North Carolina. I was the family cell sufficiency coordinator for Hickory Housing Authority. September 24th, I got terminated. I'm here tonight to let you guys know that I don't think Ms. Richardson should be receiving any kind of severance or exit benefits, whatever you want to call it. I don't know what it is. If anything, they need to take the $290,000 and put it into the properties. While working at Hickory Housing Authority, she belittled me. She screamed at me, cursed me in front of tenants. She disrespected me on many occasions. I was there for over three years, and I was loyal. She disrespected me on many occasions. I was there for over three years, and I was loyal, and I did my job. When I couldn't do my job, I asked for assistance to do better at my job. And my first evaluation there, I had a different supervisor, which gave me high marks when she did the evaluation. But when I got under Ms. Richardson, it was different. She would make comments like, I don't make Cs and Ds, I make As. She would make comments to people working on the outside for Hickory Housing that would say, she said, um, you see what type of people I have to work with? Like putting us down. Since I've been there, there has been over 30 people that has worked there that either got fired or they walked out because of her behavior. I'm asking you guys tonight, please consider, reconsider, or consider not letting her have this money, because basically what it is, is rewarding her for things that she's done totally wrong. And I have been nothing but loyal. When I was in Hurricane, one of my old tenants brought me food and drink to my home from Hickory at 10:00 PM at night. We had no power. I was sitting at home without anything but a candle. Now, my income is gone. I have no income at all. She denied my unemployment. I've appealed it, but in the meantime, what do I do? I have nothing. She refused to work with me. She refused to try to help me better myself, to better my job, to do for my clients. It's wrong. It is totally wrong. If anybody deserves any money, it should be me, because I was there. I was there doing everything I could to make the program a better program. I have actual tenants here that would vouch for that as well. She would put workload on me more than what I initially had, and then two days later asked me, are you finished with such and such? Well, Ms. Long, you just gave it to me. She didn't care. It was like she was setting me up for failure. She's wrote me up three times, suspended me three times with no pay. I'm a, I'm a single person, and I have to live as well. If it wasn't for my creditors, I don't know what I would do. I have a home, a car, I have bills. She don't care. I'm just asking you, council, please reconsider, because if you don't, it's gonna be in her favor, because she feels like she deserves it, and she's done well, and she hasn't done well. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak, other than something related to the public hearings? Okay, it doesn't appear to be anyone else that would like to speak this evening. So at this time, I'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the approval of our minutes from our regular meeting of October the 15th, 2024.
Move approval, second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is our reaffirmation, ratification on second readings. Once again, I'll entertain a motion or discussion.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That also carries unanimously. Item number eight is our consent agenda. I'll ask if there's any member of staff or council that would like to have any items removed from the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
All right, we have a motion to approve. We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That also carries, the consent agenda carries unanimously. We have three public hearings this evening. To introduce our first public hearing, I'll turn it over to our city manager, Mr. Warren Wood.
Thank you, Mayor Gess, members of the city council, Mr. Swanson. First public hearing is consideration of the voluntary non-contiguous annexation of 29.58 acres of property located at the intersection of Sandy Ford Road and Robinson Road, owned by Country Club Towns LLC, presented by Planning Director Brian Frazier.
Thank you, sir, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Wood, Mr. Swanson. Again, as Mr. Wood indicated, this is the annexation that would be tied to the second public hearing this evening. The, this is a voluntary satellite annexation by Country Club Towns LLC. The annexation type, again, is volunteer satellite. It's just under one mile from the city limits. It has three, two different addresses and one ond- un- undressed, unaddressed parcel. Yeah, okay, I got that spelled wrong, sorry. Thirty, just under 30 acres will be in Councilman Seaver's ward. Right now, there is one single-family house on one of the three properties in question tonight. The other properties are vacant. The future development is for a single-family, a single-family detached subdivision consisting of 75 units, which equates to approximately 2.5 dwelling units per acre. Annexation, of course, is being sought to gain access to public utilities and, of course, sanitary sewer. The preliminary development plans for the proposed residential development have been reviewed by the city of Hickory staff, which is our pre-application process, which comprises most department heads and managers at the city level, sometimes state DOT, sometimes county health, utilities and engineering and building services at the, at the county. So besides conducting those reviews, staff from the NC Department of Transportation, we consulted with them. The review concluded, after talking to the department heads, that adequate infrastructure is in place to support the proposed development. And additionally, the NC DOT indicated a traffic impact analysis would be, would not be needed. And planning staff has had conversations with representatives of the Western Piedmont COG to determine school enrollment in the area, because that's always a concern with new development. And from what the COG is telling us, Fred T. Ford is at 84% capacity, Jacob Fork at 66, and Blackburn at 70%. As you can see here, this, these are the three parcels in question. You've got Robin Wood, Robinson, and Sandy Ford Road. Of course, this is oriented north. You can see the Hickory city limits in the light blue, and in the tan color is the Hickory ETJ. So that's why this is a satellite annexation. This here is the current zoning of the area. Right here are the three parcels in question. Again, north, Robinson, Robin Wood, and Sandy Ford. Everything in the yellow color is currently county R20, which is most alike city R2. And then this development here, Foxwoods, and then the Country Club. And the development further up here is city R1, which is our lowest density. The aerial ortho shown here, highlighted in, in red. Again, this is the contiguous annexation, the three parcels that we're talking about this evening. The Country Club is, is here, as you can see, to the, slightly to the southwest. So the voluntary annexation petitions, we believe complies with all applicable state annexation statutes. Department heads have let us know that adequate public services are available. And the annexation of the property, we believe, will not cause available public services to fall below acceptable levels. Based on these findings, staff respectfully recommends approval of the requested annexation this evening. And I'd be glad to address any questions that, that you may have tonight.
Does council have any questions for Mr. Frazier?
I just have one. Are satellite annexation and non-contiguous used interchangeably? Are those the same things?
Non-contiguous and satellite?
Non-contiguous and satellite. Are they used interchangeably?
Pretty much the same thing, just semantics. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Frazier.
Thank you, sir.
This is a public hearing. In just a few minutes, I'll declare the public hearing open. We have three public hearings this evening, and the rules apply the same to all three public hearings. Once I open the public hearing, we will, I will allow those who would like to speak in opposition, the first opportunity to be able to do that. We allow up to 15 minutes for those that would like to speak in opposition, and we will also allow up to 15 minutes for anyone that would like to speak in favor. That's not 15 minutes per individual, that's 15 minutes total. If necessary, we'll allow up to five minutes for rebuttal and surrebuttal. Once again, we ask that if you would like to speak in opposition or in favor, that you come to the podium, that you state your name and your address. We don't allow any kind of outburst, any kind of cheering or jeering or clapping or anything of that nature. So at this time, I'll declare the public hearing open and ask if there's anyone present that would like to speak in opposition of the voluntary non-continuous annexation that you've just heard described by Mr. Frazier at the intersection of Sandy Ford Road and Robinson Road. Please come forward to the podium and state your name and address.
Hey, my name is Nicole Sedbury. My husband, John Sedbury. We live at 3064 Sandy Ford Road, and maybe this time I'm actually standing at the right time. So I, I wanted to just discuss a few, I guess, concerns, and maybe some, ask for some direction. I really would, to really consider all of that, I'd love to have something that I could touch and feel, that would be the layout of the community, where they're putting things, more of a plan or a proposal, like any other proposal. I don't really know what we're considering, since I live directly across the street, other than that there's going to be 70 homes, and they're asking to access utilities, public utilities. Anytime somebody comes to you with a proposal, even if it's in as small as a, a community, you like to see it in writing before you know what you're really considering. So I feel like I'm speaking unintelligently, without having anything in my hands, and I've called departments, and I've asked for this. But the process is that they don't provide any of that or do any of that till after they've got approval. So that seems a little bit the wrong way, in my opinion. Respectfully, the school capacity, I don't have children, I don't know. Not having the traffic study, it's gonna add about 300 to 500 more trips a day, right where it's actually already really busy. That intersection between Sandy Ford and Robin Wood has a median and does not have a turning lane, and they're proposing putting, at least I'm told, because I don't have it in writing, putting the entrance to the community very close to that, where if you come to that, that stop sign, and you're trying to turn right, where they're gonna put the entrance. The people that are stopped to turn left cannot turn, because people just keep turning right. So maybe propose a turning lane to help, and maybe put the developer on notice for that versus the city of Hickory. And that median could maybe be looked at or addressed, because we have heavy truck traffic. And again, businesses, everybody's welcome to do what they do, and there's trucks that come through there, Brooks Furniture trucks, that I think it's a very small, narrow, dangerous area already for traffic, and to add 300 to 500 more trips a day, seems just not planning, I guess, before, putting the cart before the horse, is what I'm trying to say. And I, and not, not for development, I'm actually a realtor, and my office is right over here on Center Street. So I can respect development, but to do it in a safer manner, in a planned manner, and make everything public knowledge, as I've been told it's supposed to be, I'd love to just look at it before we actually, it just gets pushed through, is, is really what I'm trying to say. And it would negatively affect property values around the area as well. I don't know what style homes, I don't have any clue what they're really trying to propose. And that's just my concerns. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition? If you're not, if you want to, there's still time. Come back up, please. If you didn't finish with what you had to say, you may finish, because we still have time.
The last question I do have, but really more of a, they're saying that the sewer easements are there to tap in without putting private property rights in question. I would love to see how that is really the case, because my neighbor has that, those, and I, I called the utilities and got the maps. My neighbor actually has where they're proposing to tap into, at the end of his pasture, and it's, it's private property. So I'm curious where they, they are proposing that they can tap into it without putting private property rights in question. Just stating that out there.
Yes, ma'am. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition? Okay, is there anyone present that would like to speak in favor?
Brandon Pridemore, 118, uh, not 1186, 513 Putting Drive, Fort Mill, South Carolina. We're the civil engineer for the applicant who is a developer and property owner. We're just here in support of this. Obviously, he's purchased a property, you know, looking at the opportunity that it presents. I think as we talked with staff and looked at the resources that are available, it makes a lot of sense to fill, I believe, what is the housing need that Hickory has acknowledged over the years. It's got a great location from a transportation standpoint, as it's, you know, got easy access to the city of Hickory, obviously, Star Town. We've got access to Highway 321, as well as Newton Conover. So I think ideally, it's situated it to be in a really good spot to support a housing development. With 30 acres and, you know, proposing around 75 homes, we're not trying to max it out with the zoning that's available, but we're trying to do something that we think is smart and equitable for the city, as well as, you know, supporting, I think, the industries that Hickory's been, you know, well endowed with, as well as the surrounding areas. So we're just here to answer any questions you may have later during the, you know, the comment section. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Is there anyone else present that would like to speak in favor? All right. There being no one else desiring to speak, I'll declare the public hearing closed and entertain a motion or discussion.
I had a question.
I've got a question.
Well, okay.
Well, since we have the developer, and for your question, can you...
Wait, we, we gotta take a motion in a second before we can have discussion. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Now we can have discussion.
Can you talk about the type of housing that you're considering in the property?
I'll share what I can, but I also, I want to be respectful, I think, of state law, which we've been advised of. But our plan is, we're gonna build 40-foot wide, single-family homes, a mix of ranch and two-story homes, probably starting at 1600 to 1800 square feet. So it's gonna be for what we call attainable housing. It used to be affordable, but I don't think it's really affordable. It's probably gonna start, you know, somewhere in, in the 300 range on up. So I think it's gonna be a good quality neighborhood. While we can't really, you know, as council, you can't, you know, base your judgment personally on a layout, that's why it's not presented tonight. But our plans aren't to, you know, push lots all the way to the perimeter. We're gonna observe open space, you know, and when you think about the type of development this will offer compared to just staying in the county, I, I was doing some computations before this meeting and coming up here tonight, is that under county zoning, you know, we, we're allowed up to 60 homes, and the open space requirement's only about 10%. You know, with city, it's a minimum of 30. We're proposing more than that. So I think there's a lot of benefits related to that.
Okay, any other questions?
That answered my question. Thank you.
Okay. While I'm here, if you have anything else, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And I know it seems backwards, that state requires us to consider the annexation first, and the conversation about the zoning is actually the next item. I know that's counterintuitive, but that's, that's the way the state lays it out for us.
My questions are more for Mr. Frazier. She, she had a question about sewer easements. Have you been part of those conversations about the... Have you been part of those conversations about the sewer?
Yes, we had had a pre-application meeting some weeks before the Planning Commission hearing back in late October. And utilities, both, both utilities and public services basically agreed that there's enough service there to provide for an additional 70 to 75 homes. Everything was adequate, as is.
An encroachment on private property won't be required?
That I am honestly not sure, sir.
Okay, all right. And my last thing. Robinwood Road is a North Carolina DOT thoroughfare, correct?
Yes, sir.
So any turn lane would be, they would have to part, they would have to get with DOT to make that determination?
They would have to meet with DOT. I mean, DOT was at our pre-application meeting. They're always invited. If they're not there, they send written comments. And they definitely said with the number of vehicle trips per day that a TIA was not warranted under their, under their study template.
Okay, thank you.
Will, would you be able to shed any light on the...
Well, let me also, first of all, thank you so very much for, for you, Brian Frazier. But thank you for coming and sharing your concern. Certainly, whenever there is something getting ready to be built in the community and for someone to come out and state their hearts, I want you to know that we certainly do hear you. My question is to Brian Frazier. I think she mentioned that she wasn't informed of the details of the building that was getting ready to take place, or the annexation of the property. So was the neighborhood, what's the process when the neighborhood is being informed?
Well, basically, we put advertisement notification on the city's website. We post at least one sign on the property or on the various corners. If there's three, if there's three streets, we put up three signs. There's also two public hearing notifications the two weeks, both weeks prior to the public hearing for council. And then we do the same signage in two weeks. Hearing notices in the newspaper for Planning Commission and City Council. And our comments, our staff report has been on the website probably two weeks before the Planning Commission meeting, which I think was October 23rd. And then under state statute 160D, we notify everyone in writing that borders the property that is immediately adjacent, and we consider that to be also across the street. We do that as a courtesy because the state does not require us to do that.
And have we seen any other individuals that were opposing this?
There was, I think, four or five, which is in my next presentation regarding the zoning, that definitely had concerns. And the only person that was for it was the developer's design engineer.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And on the utility question, it goes through a staff review. And if water and sewer weren't reasonably available, it would not have been a recommendation to annex.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions from council? All right, we have a motion, and we have a second. If there's no further discussion, I'll ask for all in favor to please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. All right, that carries unanimously the voluntary continuous, non-continuous annexation. Our second public hearing is for the rezoning of the same property. So once again, call upon our city manager, Mr. Warren Wood, to introduce it.
Thank you, Mayor Guest. Second public hearing is consideration of rezoning petition 24-11 for property located at the corner of Sandy Ford Road and Robinson Road from Catawba County R-20 to medium-density residential R-2, again, presented by Planning Director Brian Frazier.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Again, the background, of course, the rezoning was requested due to the annexation that council just approved. The applicant is looking to rezone the properties to medium-density residential R-2 from County R-2, which is similar in many ways. Again, you can see the map here of the proposed project. You can see Robinwood here, Robinson Road here, Sandy Ford Road here. Basically, the whole area is pretty much low-density per the Hickory-by-Choice plan, which is basically low-density. And the plan is two to four acres. Again, you can see the red hash marks here. Catawba County zoning is the yellow-brownish color, R-20, and anything in the light blue is already within the City of Hickory municipal jurisdiction with R-1 zoning, which is our lowest density. Again, here you can see the property outlined. This is the Catawba Country Club area that was spoken of. And this is the nearby Fox Chase subdivision that's been there probably, well, it's definitely more than, somewhere between 15 and 19 years. So according to the 2030 plan, the area is classified, as I mentioned, as low-density residential. The plan explains low-density residential as an area with a development density from two to four dwelling units per acre. And additionally, the R, as I just mentioned, the R-2 zoning is listed by the comprehensive plan as an implementing district for the low-density residential classification. The current development patterns in the area are predominantly single-family detached homes that would match the proposed medium-density R-2 rezoning request of the applicant. So for petition 2411, the recommended action is that the Planning Commission conducted their public hearing on October 23rd to consider the petition. During the hearing, one person, the applicant's design engineer spoke in favor of the rezoning, with four citizens speaking in opposition of such. And you heard the concerns regarding water and sewer infrastructure, traffic, and then they, there was a couple of other concerns as well. But upon the closing of the hearing, the Planning Commission did acknowledge the petition's consistency with the Hickory-by-Choice plan. And based on the findings, the Planning Commission voted six to one to recommend approval of the petition to this body. And staff concurs with the recommendation of the Hickory Regional Planning Commission. And again, I'm here if you have any, any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Frazier?
Can you go back to the map, to the map, and show me where the access, where the road is going to be on Robinwood? Just, I'm just curious. Do you have an idea of where that's going to be?
That, I'm not sure about the exact because in this case, being an R-2 subdivision, they would have to submit plans for us because this is not a PD, which had been discussed previously. But my understanding that it is going to be on Sandy Ford.
Oh, it's on Sandy Ford, okay, I'm sorry.
That's my understanding.
Okay, I thought it was on Robinwood because I was going to say, there's not much, there's not much property in this development that's on Robinwood.
Right.
That's where my question was. And my last question. The low density is between two and four per acre, and you just reminded me, this is two and a half per acre.
This comes out, I'm not a math major, but it came out to be approximately 2.2 units per acre.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier.
Thank you.
Okay, once again, this will be a public hearing. The same rules apply throughout the evening. At this time, I'll declare the public hearing open and ask if there's anyone present that would like to speak in opposition of the rezoning petition 2411.
Nicole Sedbury, 3064 Sandy Ford Road. Respectfully, I feel like my questions were danced around. I mentioned it was close to Robinwood Road. On Sandy Ford is where they're proposing the entrance, not on Robinwood. And also, I mentioned that the private property rights may come into question with the water and sewer, and not that they couldn't tap in because they had the right amount of homes, or that the sewer lines could handle the amount of homes. So I feel like my two concerns were danced around a little bit. And again, I didn't say that I wasn't aware of the meeting because I was here on the opposition meeting. I was, I have pressed several departments for information in my hand to look at. And all I'm told is it's public knowledge. That's my concerns. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. Is there anyone else present that would like to speak in opposition? Is there anyone present that would like to speak in favor? There being no one else desiring to speak, I'll declare the public hearing closed and entertain a discussion or motion.
Move approval of the rezoning petition 24-11.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'll clarify about the road. I did misunderstand about the access being on Robinwood, but it, so let me clarify with you, Brian. Is Sandy Ford an NC DOT-maintained road?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So anything related to turn lanes, changing the roadway, is a DOT decision, not City of Hickory?
That's correct, sir.
Thank you. And then, related to water and sewer, I ask if we knew if this would have to have, if they'd have to go onto private property to get access for water and sewer, correct? And that is unknown at this time.
It's unknown. It would probably be in my notes from the pre-application meeting. But again, we haven't, we haven't had an application for the development plans yet.
And that if it does require accessing private property, that would be between the developer and the property owner?
That would be correct, and possibly DOT as well.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
And is it correct, though, that the plans, he can't, the developer cannot really share the detailed plans as of yet, and we can't make a decision?
Not unless it was a PD. They're not required to under a standard zoning. And this, the only standard is different. It's R-2 with a conservation subdivision. So they're getting a little bit higher density and a few more units than normal. They're looking, they were looking at 75. If we stayed with the county rezone, if we stay with the County R-20 zoning instead of the 70 to 75 single-family dwelling units, it would be approximately 60. But those 60 would all have to have septic systems, and they would not be connected to the sewer. And every septic system has a lifespan. I've seen some go two or three years, and I've seen other ones go over 20. But, you know, that would be a major environmental concern if they wouldn't be tying into our municipal sewer system since we're right there anyway. There's not even a lot of extension that's needed in this case.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So to be clear, the primary reason for the difference from the 60 to the 70 is because of the sewer system and the fact that they would have to have septic tanks?
Well, if they, yeah, to be annexed and with the conservation subdivision, we can beef up their density, their maximum density. And they're not even at that. But if it stayed as County R-20, they would get 60 units, but they would not have that safety factor of sewer infrastructure. One person had commented, why don't we change it to the R-1? Well, that's not what was asked of the applicant or the developer, so that's one point. And then the nearby R-1, you can have almost any type of agricultural operation you want. Some are wonderfully managed. Some are going to be noises, sounds, things that people may not want to hear. And the R-1 is only two units per acre. And in a R-1 zoning district would also allow a mobile home park.
So R-2 is more restrictive?
R-2 is more restrictive, and R-2 is actually more restrictive than County R-20.
Which is what it is now.
Correct, sir.
Any further questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, there's no further discussion. We have a motion, we have a second. I'll ask all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? All right, the rezoning petition 2411 passes unanimously. Our third and final public hearing for the evening, I'll once again turn it over to our city manager, Mr. Warren Wood.
Thank you, Mayor Guest. Third public hearing is consideration of rezoning petition 24-12 for property located at the corner of Ninth Street Northeast and Ninth Avenue Place Northeast from industrial to high-density residential R-4, be presented by Planning Director Brian Frazier.
Thank you again, Mr. Wood. Again, the background of this property, it's to be rezoned to give the owner opportunity for residential development. Currently, an industrial district. That's one thing that we are going to be looking at with a laser focus when we do our next comprehensive plan update because there was a lot of old historic mill villages, if you want to call it that. Now, the industry, a lot of it is, is either moved offshore, or there's been an adaptive reuse, or it's abandoned. So some of those areas that are currently industrial, the housing that's in there is grandfather non-conforming uses. And there are other opportunities to change it to R-3 or R-4 near these old factories. So you can see on the map the proposed rezoning area. This is all future land use. These are, this here is all the medium-type density. You can see here, high-density residential. Down here in the bottom, you can see general business. And in all, the purple is industrial, I N, City I-N-D. This map here shows the zoning of the area. The purple is C-2. And the yellow is R-4, high-density. And then we have in the pinkish color, this is industrial. So this, according to our plan, would be consistent with Hickory-by-Choice since it's contiguous zoning. It would not be spot zoning. If somebody was asking for R-4 up here, that would be spot zoning. But since it's contiguous, it would not be. Just to get some perspective, you can see the site here. AR is, LRU is down this way. You can see Lee's Furniture Warehouse here. This is Hickory Chair downtown to the left, to the west. So according to the plan, the area currently is classified as high-density residential. That's what we're planning for, even though it's currently industrial. So the plan explains the high-density residential classifieds provides opportunities for higher residential growth and development. And the R-4 zoning is listed by the comp plan as an implementing district. And there is, as you can see by that map, the high-density residential development in Hickory is predominantly located in or near mixed-use or higher-density commercial or industrial districts. So we believe that the current development patterns in the area are for single-family detached homes and commercial uses which would match the proposed high-density R-4 rezoning request from the applicant. So the Planning Commission conducted a hearing again back on October 23rd. During the public hearing, one person spoke in favor of the rezoning. Well, there was no one in opposition speaking against it. Upon closing the public hearing, the Planning Commission again acknowledged the petition's consistency with Hickory-by-Choice 2030. And based on the findings, the Planning Commission voted unanimously seven to nothing with one person excused to recommend approval of this zoning petition before you this evening. And again, staff respectfully concurs with the recommendation of the Planning Commission. And I'd be happy to address any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Frazier?
Just one, Mr. Frazier. If I'm a potential buyer of one of the residences that's going in this spot, it would be my sole responsibility to understand that it's industrial zoning around me, correct? And that there could possibly be an industrial use next to where I live.
Yes, sir, that's possible. But what we're looking, what we've seen over the course of the last decade or so is we have a lot of industrial uses that have either been abandoned or underutilized. And there's a, there's a good possibility, depending on environmental due diligence, due diligence, that some of those, um, some of those plants could be repurposed for affordable or market-rate housing. There's a, there's a great need.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions for Mr. Frazier? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Once again, this will be a public hearing. The same rules apply. I'll declare the public hearing open and ask if there's anyone present that would like to speak in opposition of the rezoning petition you've just heard described by Mr. Frazier. There being no one desiring to speak in opposition, I'll ask if there's anyone present that would like to speak in favor.
I'm Byron Bean, five-thirty Forty-third Avenue, Court Northwest, Hickory. Good evening, board. Uh, my family has owned this land for a long, 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 long time, and at one time, it was part of an industrial mill, but that mill has been sold and also the, and torn down. The property was cut in two by Robinson Road many years ago. So there's houses all around this, uh, piece of property, and it's only about five blocks from an old line. So I've been approached by several builders who want to build either some houses or some apartments, and I think it's, it'd be a good use of the land. It's sat empty for a long, long time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor? There being no one else declare, uh, desiring to speak, I'll declare the public hearing closed and entertain a motion.
Move approval?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign? That also carries unanimously. Uh, that's the last of our public hearings. Uh, next item on the agenda is our departmental reports. Uh, typically, our, our city manager would give this departmental report, but as of yesterday, uh, five members of the Hickory Hou, Public Housing Authority Board of Commissioners resigned. That was yesterday, on Monday, November the fourth. Under North Carolina law, uh, the mayor is responsible for filling any board vacancies on the Housing Authority Board. And, uh, I am currently working to identify qualified candidates, uh, to fill those seats. Of course, I welcome any suggestions from those members of the council. Uh, and, uh, I, I recognize that there are probably people here in the audience this evening, uh, that were here to hear an update concerning the Hickory Public Housing Authority Board. But considering, uh, the recent resignations, I'm going to make a motion that we table any consideration of the abolishment of the Hickory Housing Public, Public Housing Authority until our regular meeting on December the fir, third, twenty-twenty-four.
Second.
Okay, so, uh, we've got a motion, we've got a second. Is there any further discussion concerning this matter?
I would put, um, that you're looking for candidates. There also needs to be someone that represents the Section Eight. So we would need someone that would be willing to step forward, that has Section Eight housing administered, I believe, by the Hickory, um, Public Housing to also be on that board.
And just to, to clarify, Mr. Swanson, uh, the board, as my understanding, uh, consist at today of four remaining board members. And, uh, would you please clarify that board as it exists with the four members until, or whether I appoint anyone or not, can meet and can make decisions as they are four member, board members, long as they have a majority? Is that correct?
Yeah, so certainly, they want to seek their own legal advice on that issue, but in reviewing their bylaws, um, and under our law, vacancies do not, um, count against quorum requirements. So they would still be able to function as a body of four, as long as they have a quorum, which I think their bylaw states a majority of that for. So three members present at the meeting would allow them to operate.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign? That carries unanimously. Uh, next on the agenda is appointments to boards and commissions. I have, uh, one appointment this evening. I would like to appoint Mr. Amari Brown to the, uh, Public Art Commission. Are there any other appointments this evening? All right, there doesn't appear to be any other appointments. I'll make that motion that we appoint him. We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign? All right, that carries unanimously. Uh, Mr. Wood, are there any matters not on the agenda?
No, sir.
Okay. Uh, general comments, uh, just, I have just one this evening. Uh, sad passing this past Sunday of Ms. Lynn Lell. Of course, she's the wife to Leroy Lell, who passed also, uh, in the last few months. Uh, Ms. Lell grew up in the Highland Community. Uh, she was a graduate of Saint Stevens High School. Uh, she was on the Board of Commissioners for the Catawba County Board of Commissioners for twelve years, and of course, she, uh, is, is the mother of Brad Lell, who has served on our city council. So on behalf of the city council, I would like to send our condolences, uh, to the family of Lynn Lell. And, uh, we certainly do, uh, we all, we all knew the family. We all know the, the family, and we, uh, greatly appreciate all the many contributions, too many to list, uh, that Lynn and Leroy, uh, have contributed to not only the City of Hickory, but to the, uh, greater Hickory metro area and Catawba County. So our condolences go out to that family. Any other comments?
Uh, I'd like to certainly, uh, recognize any veterans that are present. We know that Veterans Day is coming. Uh, personal plug, the only reason why I would know that, because I was born on Veterans Day as well, but certainly want to recognize all the veterans that are present and also in the city.
And to follow up on that, there will be a, um, Veterans Day, uh, celebration or service, excuse me, um, at the Elks Club.
That's correct.
And everyone is invited.
And, and once again, and it, I know it's already been said, but it's worth saying again, how much we greatly appreciate our public services, public utilities and public works, uh, coworkers, not just those folks, but as you heard at the beginning of the presentation this evening, uh, they've done a tremendous job and continue to do that, and we just want to say how much we appreciate, uh, that that's, uh, they don't, they don't always get recognized. We have a tendency, uh, to, to recognize the folks that are, that are out in the police department, the fire department, and they certainly deserve it as well, but sometimes, uh, some of the other coworkers with, throughout the city, uh, don't get the recognition that they should. So I just want to take this opportunity once again to say, to tell our appreciation for all the hard, dedicated, loyal, uh, coworkers that we have throughout the city. Anyone else? All right, I'm going to make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign? All right, we stand adjourned.